Which is helpful because I still think we have a focus on the agenda with. It's different up like off the map, so I think it's good to make sure it's clear.
What?
On. Are you on there? We needed to look at a like certain stuff.
Might have seven o'clock, I'll call this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone roll call when you're ready, chair.
Tina Thompson.
Here.
Chris Coolick.
Here.
Jeremy Smell.
Here.
Charlie Charles Stoll.
Here.
Kevin Miller.
Here.
Sharon Long.
Here.
Tim Miller.
I'm here.
Ted Long.
Here.
S A R P D.
Here.
John Fontaine.
I'm sorry. I wanted to.
You want to add to the roll call.
Yes. John Fontaine.
Okay, next we'll move on to agenda amendments, does anyone have any amendments? Not, we'll move on to the visitor's written requests. I have no handwritten request, but we did have an advance request from Nicholas Kerr of KMM, so. Get on the floor.
Thank you very much, sir. My name's Nicholas Kerr, I'm a small business owner, I own a company called Keystone Municipal Management. We specialize in management of small water and sewer authorities. I don't know if the board would be interested or the this solicitor and or supervisors. We have a template of a contract that we have in Butler County, that's a small water authority. Basically, I'm here because I love to work for Gilpin. We have hydro excavators, we have workers that are D E P certified about sewer and water. I have a class A license myself. Tom Covington is the manager of Petroleum Valley Regional Water Authority. We had stopped by Gilpin Township Sewer and Water Authority. Maybe three or four different times, attended their meetings, we'd love to work for you guys. I brought templates of our board packets, how we prepare and work with other municipalities. We have workers that we could put to work immediately. We understand that there's been some talks and negotiation with M A W C. It's that our position is that you guys have a valuable asset. It may need some work, but we hate, you know, we'd hate to see you lose it for not what the evaluation is. A lot of times, systems that are smaller like this have a hard time performing capital work. In speaking with board members at the Water Authority Board, they said they have a hard time hearing leaks on service lines. That's why their water loss is almost sixty eight percent. Devices like this right here is a logger that goes on, you put it in a curb box, it'll listen for a leak. Old school way, it's an aquaphone. You go out, you turn turn valves, you turn curbs off, you listen for those leaks. We also have consultants, so if there's issues in in around, you know, any of the sewage treatment facilities or water treatment facilities, we have consultants that we bring in as well. We have an attorney that works with us as well. So, you know, I I basically, I don't know if you ever have any dialogue back and forth, but if you had any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to ask them. I did bring some paperwork, I don't know if you're able to accept that, but they are templates of contracts that we have, there are three year contracts, one year contracts. We work at both sewer and water. And we, the largest account that we have is in West Warren County, F T M S A. It's approximately thirteen thousand customers, that's Murraysville Sewer Authority. We haven't heard back from Gilpin Township Sewer and Water Authority about it. I had some conversations with their secretary, Sonia, they they were positive. But we haven't really pursued anything more than that. So, we did read the newspaper article yesterday and I wanted to give give the opportunity to show up here to say that I would love to work here. And if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And also to let you guys know that we're willing to go to work on day's notice if needed. And that was the the meaning of my stop tonight, so would it be okay if I gave you some paperwork?
Absolutely, that's, you know, no reason not to.
Mr. Miller, I got the solicitor, here you go. So that's the that's the contract. This is a small sewer authority that we have that's approximately the same size. This is a small water authority that we have that's approximately the same size. This is just a called Malwa. This is an A M D authority, so we just do work on abandoned line drainage. And then this is an agreement for just a management contract. And basically, the way that these work is all price, all costs associated with employees, vehicles, insurance, utilities. We bear all of that, so the majority of the O and M budget becomes KMM's responsibility. We have a monthly fee that we would charge. That's based on what you would want the employees to make largely, so, you know, it's not a set price from authority to authority. So we'll work with you the best that we could, if you would opt to even want that. We have our own equipment, like I said, or if you have equipment, when we take on accounts like Bear Creek, we purchase their equipment. So they had an appraisal of their trucks and hand tools, and we stepped in and we bought that. Any equipment that was absent, leak detection equipment, hydro excavator, we purchased that independent of the authority. It's our equipment, but we do use it on those accounts. We are capable of doing front office work. So we typically use Munalink as our billing system and QuickBooks. Yeah, so it's one thing to look at, I mean, you obviously have the option, you know, with some of the larger entities like M A W C around. And I tend to believe that regionalization can lead to some efficiencies. But I do think that assets have value, and I think that in a short term or a rush fashion, sometimes you can be short on what those assets will worth, so if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Do you guys offer like a month to month type of service, like obviously, we're in a bit of a predicament here, and everybody's, you know, aware of that. To give us time to to kind of find what is the best option for our residents and for our township. Is there a short term, a short term option that we could go with in the interim between, you know, when they possibly the the Water Authority dissolves and we don't have a permanent plan in place?
Yes, so the shortest term that I have is one year. The way that we structured Bear Creek was one year with no action, it renewed for two years. And the only thing that I would ask is if we do the contract for one year, I've never laid somebody off, so we would be filling in a majority of the time with a consultant. So there would be potentially a revolving door of maybe three people or four people that are providing service there. What we like to see, what we see the best response with for the smaller authorities is on an account like that, to have two permanent employees and one part-time employee. So, you know, if the idea was that you were planning on holding on to the asset, you know, I don't know that we would be necessarily the best fix, but in a short term, like a year, where, you know, you guys know that you'd like to do a sale or something like that, we would do everything that we could to help you out. If you have an emergency, give us a call, we we do have rates that we can drop off for you that are just hourly rates. We don't do a lot of that work typically, it's, you know, we'll, Bear Creek was in a similar situation where they had one of their employees pass away, and then the other two employees really didn't know what they were doing, one was just a laborer and the other person was you know, was more like grounds maintenance, we'll call it that. So we stepped in and we filled in on a short term basis, shortly after we stepped in on a short term basis, the board saw the work that we were doing and opted to hire us on a longer contract, so. Yeah, I, you know, I I'm not familiar with the specifics of the authority, other than it's a distribution system on the water side with two water tanks with some high water loss and a sewage system with one pump station. That's my basic knowledge of it, but things like that are our specialty. I mean, we're we're good at handling leak detection. We're really good at doing I and I searching, so we're familiar with all the different cameras, rigid, you know, EnviroSite. So those are the things that we have to do, so yes, we would have tried to accommodate you, but we would look for a year.
What would your response time look like in the case of an emergency? So obviously, one of the big concerns is if we have a mainline break, our tanks could be empty in a couple hours.
Right.
So what what response time are we looking at to get here, shut that off, and make the repair?
So you're forty five minutes from our closest employee, I'm an hour away. That's why I don't like to use contractors or consultants typically, you know what I mean? I like to hire local and have people have the ability to respond quickly. So that's why I tend to ask for longer contracts, I understand this is situation's a little unique. So I'm gonna be a hundred percent honest, probably from when we receive the call till our response time, our closest employee would actually be Brian, and Brian is in. Well, he waits and sleeps though. So I mean, basically, when we get the call, you know, we would prepare as quick as we can, we always maintain one person on call. So as fast as they could get dressed, that person has a week on call, so they know for that whole week not to be out by the phone, ready to respond. But it would be the drive time of that employee, you know.
Usually, the hardest part of the leak is not the.
I'm sorry, this is.
It's usually about getting the employee here. The hardest thing to get done is the the one call, the knowledge of the system of where did it break? Is it in the loop? Can we isolate it? Where can it be isolated and get it slowed down?
Do the valves work?
You know, do the valves work, it's the maintenance been done. If you don't have a particular guy, that's why we prefer that one year contract where you get the knowledgeable guy in here. When you have the knowledge in here, these repair works go so much faster and the finding of leaks goes a little bit quicker. One thing to come in and if you have a loop to shut sections down and find leaks, it's totally different if you have the knowledge of the system to go in and say, you know what, these valves haven't been worked, these valves need work, these hydrants need to be tested, need to listen on to see if they leak, or they even had maintenance done on them. You know, so those, to have that person for a year to be able to look at that whole thing, because we we do rotate our maintenance in a year timeframe.
But we have gone to like Foxburg and other places when they had leaks, and we perform leak detection, identify them. And what we find is most of the time when we go to i- identify or isolate those leaks, what happens is you go to shut the valve, and there's a bonnet on a valve with four bolts. When it hasn't been exercised, it's circulation on the inside of the pipe forces the bond to pop before it does, they call that a valve that rises, a rising valve. So, you know, I mean, it's it's hard for me to say, but we would get here, we would definitely be interested, we would respond as fast as we could get it up to.
I I think one of our biggest fears, and I can't speak for the whole board, I know mine is, obviously, the two employees that are retiring have all of the institutional knowledge. They have the full understanding, so the things you're talking about as far as valves that are rising, hydrant maintenance, they have all of that institutional knowledge. And I I fear it would be hard for someone to step in, especially, I mean, let's say, week after they retire and they're not helping at all, there's a break, you've got a lot to figure out before those ten. So that, I think that, and again, I'm not speaking for the board, but for myself, that that's a big concern.
That's a, that's a very logical, I think that is both logical and accurate.
Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Kerr?
The stuff you gave us is just a generic example of contracts and stuff that you used in the past.
One, so two are board packets, so these are the board packets that we deliver monthly, that have the pictures of all the work that we do. We set up an operation report, so we speak to the board, we ask them exactly what they want. So when they're buying our time, say it was that you wanted a hundred and four hours a week, which is two full-time employees and one part-time employee. What exactly, where where do you, what is it that you want us to do? Do you want us to do leak detection? Do you want us to do large valve operation, hydrant maintenance? And then we track that picture, put it in the board packet, so that there is proof and evidence of the work that we're doing. So so we have those in there, so part of our board packets, part of the contracts that we've offered to other people. Yeah, so, you know, it's a little bit of everything in there, you know, I figured I'd bring anything you guys would maybe have a question about, because I know that mine is kind of sensitive, so I just brought brought all of that that with us today, so.
I have one more question that I promised us.
Sure.
More questions. If you were gonna put together a proposal for us, how long would that take you? As far as like a total, do you guys do total acquisitions of water and sewer systems?
No, so we don't do any, we don't ever do any ownership.
You're a management company.
Right, exactly, that that's from start to finish, we will do anything from providing one manager to be there. So the the least involved that we, you know, could be is one full-time person there, or it's total operation, where we would come in and we would buy everything, so the the authority and or township would have no expense in buying equipment. They'd have no expense in retiring, they'd have no expense in insurance, either workers' comp or health insurance. All of that is handled by KMM for a flat monthly fee, so that way the operation cost is fixed, and then you, you know.
So the township, we slow in the lines.
Lines, everything would still be yours except for the personnel and the equipment that we use to fix the lines. And if you wanted to keep retention of that, we would allow that as well.
And then if you were gonna evaluate our system and put together what you thought was the most logical solution based on our current issue, who'd you do that for us in a in a in a short term?
It would be the almost exactly the Bear Creek contract that you have in your hand. That was for three full-time employees, yours would be two and a half, so we would work with you on that. But yeah, it would be essentially the same contract, but it would say sewer and water. You know, it's specifically a sewer authority, but they have actually four package plants, they are twelve pump stations. So it's a little bit different, they have three full-time employees. But Tom works at Water Authority, you know, Tom, Ray, the other employees underneath Tom have their D E P license, so we are D E P certified to work on water works.
No question, a lot of questions.
Sure.
You said if we contracted, you would hire local employees, so if they weren't local, they would live here, but we would, what is local to you? Like in Gilpin or within forty minutes?
All of the other accounts that we have, so like Tom, Ray, Devin, Sean, Leah, they all live in the in the townships that the authority serves, so they're onsite. That's what we try to do, so I can't promise that that happens quickly, but we do try to hire people that are as close to the facility as possible. We don't have employees that are hired from here, obviously, but we always maintain two or three employees surplus, so that when we have situations like this, we can kind of employ them to come in and manage.
That's the difference between a one-year contract and like a three-year contract. For a three-year contract, we can hire those people and it's a little bit more stability in us to be able to hire those local people, get the training, do get all the training for them, get them certified, get them operators. And it's better for us because they, the response time for a leak rating is quicker when they're living, ten minutes, twenty, forty five minutes.
One of the big problems that we did have with the Water Authority when we went there in the past is they were concerned about finances, essentially. One of the things brought up to us was if you find the leaks that we have, we don't have the money to fix them. So, you know, that that was the other concern that they had brought up, is essentially, they were kind of nervous if we did come in and we identified the leaks rapidly, that they weren't gonna be able to address those financially, and what we said is, you know, we have to abide by all the D E P rules and regulations, but, you know, we work at the base of it. You know, we understand that, you know, the board and or the township would be our boss, we report directly to the chairperson of that board. We show up to all monthly meetings, we handle the front finances, so we're gonna take our directions off of who hires us. But that was kind of the, one of the big hangups when we had discussed this relationship with the water and sewer.
And you mentioned.
No, go ahead, Tina.
And then you mentioned like front end office and billing, so meter reading, all of those things. Are those additional employees or part of the two and a half that you?
Two and a half.
Okay.
We would try to schedule that, so we would try to have it where during the day, we would put basically four days a week for eight hours, we'd put people out to do whatever operation you were directed to do. So whether that's valve, large valve operation, leak detection, literally whatever it is that you you would want us to do. Wet well, maintenance on on wet well, I and I detection. And then we're gonna save one day a week to do meter reads. We're gonna have those two people pretty much stay together, except for when they meter read, we'd have them go out, because it's my understanding that you guys actually have the touchpads, so you have to take an interrogator and go up to each individual touchpad for the read, so it's not a radio read like other places where you drive by.
Mine's a magnet.
You don't have the M X U's.
Yeah, so, you know, we're gonna have those two guys once a week go out and the the system, I don't know this for fact, but should be broken down into books, so we would go out once a week and we'd read a book once a week with both those guys. Now establishing those walking routes, that's again, that's, we're gonna be a little bit of a learning curve. So it'd be hard with no guidance, but we we would figure it out, it just would be not as efficient initially.
So piggybacking off the employee questions, when you're saying you would try to hire a a long-term contractor, you're hiring local employees, are you hiring them on to your firm or are you hiring them on to the authority?
Yeah, always, so when we hire new employee, like we have recently, the first thing that we do is we give them an aptitude test internally just to make sure, you know, where their knowledge base is, you know, whether they just left off from high school or they have a college degree. And then from there, we send them to D E P classes. We, now that's our our burden, so we pay them to go do that, and we like everyone within two years to try to be certified. So yes, they would be our employee, we'd be making that investment in them to make sure they have the appropriate training.
I only ask, because in my perfect world, if we were to bring in a contractor, I would like to see us turn around our authority and eventually turn it back into its own just operating authority, not needing a contract.
Yeah.
So I mean, I was just curious if you brought employees on on behalf of the authority, that eventually we could step away from the contract and have a full operating authority, or?
Many authorities think that way, and they tend to lean towards what they call management contract instead of an operation and maintenance contract.
Okay.
And that's where you just provide one manager, he goes to that spot, and he basically directs, you know, trains, directs, and aids, anyway, so it's a working position always when we have a management contract. That's how I work my nine to five now, is at Murraysville as as a manager under the management contract, and that's assisting in everything from digging replacement veins to, you know, working on or in and around the plant with Bob. Bob is one of our consultants, this is Robert Schwimmer, so he works with KMM. If we have an issue, say at a sewage treatment plant and it's very finicky, or there's something that's very nuanced with new chemical addition, we tend to bring Bob in with his experience, so that would be more of a management style contract. And then we have obviously the owner contract. So we we can accommodate both, and there was a contract in there that was a management contract. Obviously, it's a much larger authority, but the parameters would would be the same, so.
So we could do a three, hypothetically, we could do a three-year contract to turn the authority around.
You know, O and M.
And then switch to a management contract where we then bring in our own employees and.
That would be my exact thought too, Tina, is maybe like a hybrid contract of it's O and M to start.
Yeah.
But the management portion would start to bring on authority employees that at some point you could step back to just a management style.
I think that would be great, I honestly, I don't even think you'd need to do the hybrid, I think you could just plan on doing it consecutively, and if we showed up and did not meet your expectations, at that point in time, you could hire whatever manager you wanted. You know, that that would be my advice, you know, to you guys, but we would be interested in either.
A lot of times, a lot, I worked at Petroleum Valley for fifteen years, I've been working with Bear Creek for over a year now. A lot of times, most of the managers, they they say exactly what they want to do, they, we want to come in, take over, and start working on it, we want to take them back over. But then once they see what we do in the field, what we bring to the table, their answer to me is, we should have done this twenty years ago. Why did we hold this up? Why didn't we not do this contract? It's it's kind of a relief, because then you don't have to worry about paying your employees, dealing with your insurance, that's that's all the harbor. You know, we don't have to worry about that, and then when they see that after a couple years, they're like, wow, this is good, and that's why we stuck with Petroleum Valley for fifteen, over the twenty years.
We've never lost them now, so either on management or O and M, once we've moved in, what they find is a reduction in O and M costs. You know, they'll see that because the the systems work more efficiently, most of the time, the contracts are structured in a manner where the total compensation for the employee after pay, insurance, both healthcare and mortgage, vehicles, all of those associated prices, they typically are about a hundred and forty percent of the actual cost, the employee's salary. And what they'll see is that remains relatively stagnant, but then they'll see things like their fault water pressures go down exponentially, they'll see things. Now, my understanding is you guys aren't penalized for I and I with any infiltration into the sewer, basically being clean water, stormwater that gets into the sewer, into the pump station that's passed to the big gang. So, you know, you won't see huge operational savings there, but some authorities do have that. Where on the sewer side, after they hit, say, you know, six hundred gallons per E D U, you know, through a pump station, after that, they're billed like a consumption or a commercial charge. So, you know, that that could be savings as well, so. The big thing that we think that we could really knock out of the part for use of water system, I mean, that that's something where, when we kind of looked at it from the thirty thousand foot view. I mean, that is kind of our, that's where we started and cut our teeth is on the water systems, we've adapted into the sewer systems. You know, I am very confident that we could do a good job on the water system.
And well as all you guys realize, anytime you maintain something, it's gonna last longer, it's gonna be more efficient, and it'll actually operate correctly. I do know that the pump station down in Baghdad has not been cleaned out since two thousand seventeen. Just because I have integral knowledge and I also sit on the Kiskiaboard, which you guys are aware, because you appointment to that. So that pump station, you know, at F T M S A, we clean our pump stations out twice a year. That one, there's reason why a pump breaks, not cleaning the bottom of the wet well.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
My hydrant, my yard has not been touched in twenty-two years. You guys would always pay forty-seven thousand dollars a year to the authorities to have maintenance done on hydrants. I I couldn't tell you whether one was done or not.
But what I would say is, Bob is right in this in this fact, when you have a pump that's clogged or a pump that needs maintenance to it, instead of just letting it burn up and replacing the pump, by do actually pulling it, using your hydro excavator, cleaning out any of the fats, oil, or grease that are in there, you know, hydro excavating, sucking out all the grit that's at the bottom. You know, doing those things, pulling the pump out, picturing it so you can see what was repaired or replaced on it. Not hiring a contractor to come out and do that work. I mean, it it, one, it tends to be cheaper in the long run, but like I said, we are interested in both and we offer both. You know, so we're excited and happy he'd be considered.
And KMM also owns a, the license to a software which is called M V P. So it's a maintenance software, I'm very, you know, integral knowing. So what it does, you can put all of your equipment, you can put all your P M's, you can put anything in there that if you guys wanted or the sewage, the Water Authority wanted, tracking of the maintenance that was done on a piece of equipment, what you purchased for, what the, anything about it is is tra- is tracked in a system, the vehicle inspections, tires, you could track everything that's in that based on that M V P software that 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 they have the license for.
You mentioned, and I may have missed this earlier, you have your own attorney.
Yeah.
Does that mean you handle the leak, like municipal claim shut offs, or do you still lead that with the?
Yeah, we tend to lead that.
I mean, just to clarify, I'm not the municipal authorities, I'm just asking for my own.
No, no, so I apologize, I, but you were, you know, we, so say someone has a question, they say, listen, you terminated my water for not for delinquency, for non-payment, I'm gonna call the police. Instead of an authority employee calling the solicitor and racking up a bill for the solicitor, they typically charge every half hour. So say, in some authorities that we've been to, those have been very high, and that's because the employees are constantly calling them about things like delinquency, about things like, you know, access to a curb box, you know, if there's a meter pit, there's no curb box there, you know, where's the ownership to? What we have a lot of times on, is things like that, I can call our solicitor, Hickson Law, out of Pittsburgh, Greg Stein specifically. I ask him, hey Greg, if I do this, you know, what is your, under the municipal authorities act, is this legal or is this stopping? Then I get the answer, and I can speak directly to the chairman of the board or of the township supervisors and say to them, listen, it's our opinion from our attorney and it's our opinion as KMM, that this would be the legal act. So now, they haven't, the authority hasn't accrued any additional bill in doing that, we have. So it it's definitely not an official position, but, you know, sometimes legal litigations are because of employees not knowing exactly what they should or shouldn't do, results in a lot of excessive bills. So that's one thing too, is, you know, if we're bringing in new people and they don't know exactly what's going on, we have that learning curve kind of deep by having an attorney that we keep on the data that they can talk to for at any point in time.
Would this, I I'm just asking some legal questions.
Sure.
This would have to be put out for for bid, would it not?
No, it's a professional service contract.
Alright, oh.
Yeah, you can.
I'll trust you on that, but.
Yeah, so professional service contracts, because they're not apples-to-apples comparisons, if you were gonna go out and draft a bid for this, it it would be very hard to have an apples-to-apples comparison.
That's my only thought with that, it's obviously well in excess of the advertising limits, so that's why I was just asking.
Yeah, when I, when I, when I sat on the Gilpin Board, we went off an R F Q, and R F P, and we got R D M, we got Eads, and we got C W M. At that point, R D M was the only one that provided any type of, you know.
Front office.
Yeah, front office stuff, Eads and C W M would do a hundred percent of the the operation, and Eads actually even said that, you know, the authority would have been better to go with an R D M, now we have a KMM option versus an R D M, and so now if there's two, you got KMM, R D M, and then you got Eads, and, you know, they're only only operations, nothing to do with any of the billing, any of the office running or any of that stuff.
And full disclosure too, I was a partner at R D M, and I actually left to create K KMM for smaller, so, you know, I was with them when we went through their first proposal. That was three years ago.
Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kerr, we appreciate it.
Please, you you don't mind if I don't stick around?
You don't want to stick around.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think we got a lot of information from you, thank you very much. I have no other visitor's written request, so we will move on to minutes. We have the minutes from the November nineteenth meeting in front of us. Once everyone has had a chance to review the minutes, I will need a motion to approve the minutes.
I read them earlier, so I'll make that motion.
I read them as well. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions or comments on the minutes? All those in favor, aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, next we'll move on to the financial report whenever you're ready, Sharon.
In the capital reserve fund, starting balance is one hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Total receipts of three hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-three cents, leaving an ending balance of one hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. In the general fund, starting balance is two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars and three cents. Total receipts of sixty-four thousand, seven hundred one dollar and seventy-eight cents. Total dispersments of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. Leaving an ending balance of two hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars and twelve cents. In the payroll fund, starting balance is zero, total receipts of fourteen thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. Total dispersments of fourteen thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirteen cents, leaving an ending balance of zero. In the non-uniform pension fund, the starting balance is zero, total receipts of three thousand, sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Total dispersments of three thousand, sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents, leaving an ending balance of zero. In the road bond fund, the starting and ending balance is the same of nine thousand, three dollars and twenty-six cents. In the state fund, the starting balance is ninety thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and one cent. Total receipts of eight thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Total dispersments of two thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents, leaving an ending balance of ninety-six thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and sixty-three cents, and that is all. I will say on the state fund, um, that deposit of eight thousand, three eleven ninety-six plus for the mowing agreement, it should have went into our general fund, so I did the online transfer today, taking it out of the liquid bill and.
This is like the third time they've made that mistake and you keep correcting it.
I know. I know. I'll be correcting it again.
Next for?
Mowing.
Next for us mowing the state right away.
Yes.
Having heard the financial report, do I have a motion to approve? Motion's made by Kevin, seconded by Chris. Any questions or comments on the financial reports? All those in favor, aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, we wanted the bills to be paid. Once everyone has had a chance to review the bills list, I will need a motion to pay the bills. Motion by Jeremy to pay the bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tina. Any other questions or comments on the bills? All those in favor, aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to executive session. I believe there's a need for executive session for personnel and for
Potential litigation issues.
potential litigation and contractual issues. So do I have a motion to go into executive session for those issues?
So we'll make that motion to go into executive session for the issues listed.
Motion by Tina. Do I have a second? Seconded by Chris. All those in favor, aye, opposed, motion carries and we'll go into executive session at seven thirty-three.
How are you?
Thank you for swiping us in downstairs or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I just, we need a key to get in.
It's downstairs.
Going down, they can hear it from the upstairs.
You didn't get a clue.
Yeah.
Well, you have to be invited in. It's not usually a good thing to be invited in either. So I'm okay sitting on here.
Gary, you still have your real estate license?
No, I've been hired from Real Estate.
I was just talking to Jenny Frank yesterday.
I don't know if that's for his.
She just reactivated hers.
She did? She feel better?
Yeah. She can drive now.
And she's sick.
Yeah, she had some problems with vision.
She, um, I I've known, they might have lived here over forty years. Her daughter and my daughter all play ball together and, uh, well, when my brother passed away, she, hey, I'll sell the house for you. And, uh, we got like forty, forty-some thousand for the house, but she sold it to people that were friends of hers down in Verena, wherever. What do you call it, realtors? They had it a year and they sold it for a hundred and ten thousand. So pissed off. I guess that happens in that drawing over.
Did that guy say he was?
I don't know where he went.
I think he was.
Is it that one guy that was here this evening up here?
It's one of them?
The one.
Yeah, I don't know where.
Oh, I was gonna say, I wondered if I've, I've never seen him before.
He just, he was at a meeting a couple of years ago. Talking about, um, leak detection.
Rob's been around here a little time.
I I I remember, I remember him coming to, uh, a meeting before talking about the leaks and the excessive leaks we have and about better leak detection.
Maybe that's when he was on the board.
I believe that might have been right when he got off of the board. But I don't, I, he ca- he looked familiar, but then it kind of hit me that he came here when he was started talking about, um, the hydrant in front of his house and stuff.
I didn't know how come what they were saying. I kept saying all these initials.
Yeah, all these African East, that was, yeah, that was, that was.
Big bay.
I was kind of looking around the room and seeing, did anyone else feel this stupid as a?
The fire hydrant that's bottom of my driveway. I'd say once I remember them open. I was gonna, I actually was gonna open it, but I thought, man, what happens? There's fire here, cause that's the only fire hydrant right in that area. And I don't know how many times there's a valve right by that fire hydrant and across the driveway on my side, there's another valve. That's why I have those blue reflectors. I have them there so those guys can find it. The one that's on the hillside, if if a lot of water comes down my driveway, it covers everything up. You just don't see it.
That leaves get to be about four feet in there too.
And and you notice that too, huh? I never see a place that gathers so many damn leaves. I'll say, take my skidload down here, just scoop them up and take them over and dump them on the other side of the road.
Quick question.
So let's get rid of all your old dump vehicles used for selling. So what are you going to stay on now for? What kind of trucks?
We have two small dump trucks.
Both Fords or?
No, the ones that Sterling or Dodge.
Well, that's a Ford. Sterling's actually just Ford.
Dodge built it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They must have bought that, cause that's one Ford, but out of the F F six fifties. They were all, the big S or the Ford loaded up.
Yeah, no, that that's, in fact, beans when they work on it, they use a Dodge VIN number. Cause they're cheaper parts than the exact same apartment, but it's definitely very cheap, you know? But, uh, we have that new F six hundred, but that's, you know, smaller. And then we have the internationals, the one.
That's the blue one, the river.
And then the pickup truck.
Yeah, I see that here and there.
Yeah, it's nice to have it to to use for just to day to drive around.
To pick stuff up too.
Oh, yeah. I I actually have a, had a fight for that thing. Whenever that old military truck we had was kind of
That one.
On that's the door, that old square body Chevy. I think it was a tank. They were the the board at the time, didn't really want to replace it. And I was like, man, I gotta have a pickup truck. It's just, it's so much easier on a pickup truck. With this one here, it's, it's a nice truck. It, I can tow that roller with it. You know, I don't have to use it for dump trucks or anything for that. I can just use it. That's all we need to do. I use it. It's a lot easier. It's powerful. You know, we have the lead watch for it and plow. It's, it's kind of like our backup. For when it's snowing, or something happens, if something breaks down, we just pull in, jump in it, finish what we gotta do and then go from there, you know?
That's one of those, uh, flying things in the air here. Who's gonna see it?
I'm just making sure everybody else heard it. It wasn't crazy.
What? It was like, that's why.
Somebody's found it.
I'll remove it from the table.
Oh, mine's going off in my car.
I did hear a lot when that guys were talking, it sounded like a quad, like up and down it. Okay, like.
There was somebody flying up and down here on a bike, probably around five o'clock today. I was on the other hill and I thought, boy, you could hear him. I just think people ride bikes anytime past August, they're asking to kill. I'll take one deer walk right out in front of you and you're done.
What's up? Yeah, that's fine. I told you.
Well, at least this time, if they have a super long extension, we'll break into the snacks.
Yeah.
That's right.
So I over at Mill in West Leechburg, they sold it. If you want, London sold it. But when when I was into trucks down there, there was a hundred and fourteen drivers. Now they're short.
Yeah, you got rental.
Cut all the outside hole on the way. Well, the last three weeks, there's one of the guys I work with, he's still working down here. Tracked the trailer every morning to one of the Leechburg plant, calling all the spare parts out that they stored there for when they were building that new strip mill. Yeah, there's, I seen another guy driving today, so I'm wondering if they're running two trucks trying to get everything out of there.
Do they know what's gonna go in there?
Some company from Ohio supposedly bought it and and it said that they do demolition and and I'm thinking, I don't think they're gonna tear it down if they bought it, but then London might have sold it just to get away from like the the ground.
We got some areas there, root, you know, maybe.
We got some million dollars. Well, I know. I, I was working. I was working in a truck shop and we had four trucks. So you would pull a truck in and all you did was open an oil can up and down there. And it went to a tank and they'd pump it up and they would take it over to the other side of the plant to their wastewater treatment plant. They would treat that oil. I don't know where it went to after that. And anyway, there was a spot in the garage. And anytime they were having problems, remember they kept getting water or oil in the river and they didn't know where it's coming from?
Alright, sounds good, bro.
Here, where the upper end of the garage, that's where they would always pull them straddles and we'd drain, break in that drain. Well, what happened was crickets crossed there from West Leechburg undermining that. There's a cavern, it was like thirty foot, twenty-five foot high. There was nothing there. They were chiseling the floor. They had to put piping in to fix that. And then they didn't drain oil up that way anymore. They were done. But that's why they were having all the trouble. Yeah, it was, we'd rather them fix it. I know they had a, they had, um, a cooling line down at Brackenridge. And this cooling's, it, there's only like two lines, two of their plants had it, the one in Brackenridge and somewhere else. And this stuff's so corrosive. Boy, they had leaks. They didn't pay attention till a truck went over outside in a section of the ground and started to blast. It was all the way into the building under that line. It was all ate away. The stuff you see there, working for something.
Probably should have paused the the live stream.
I wonder if we're supposed to do that?
Somebody watching from home, probably four.
I know. Be like a two hour meeting of a bunch of.
Can you actually watch that at home?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Yeah, he's live streaming it. So people can log in from home and watch it. Then you can go on after the fact too, watch it tomorrow, just replay it.
I'd rather be here to see the initial reactions. Yeah. Yeah, you'll be, I'll be clips and clips this out and clips that and.
Isn't today your birthday?
Yes, it is.
And you're choosing to spend it here.
Yes.
Happy birthday.
I I I turned sixty-nine years old today. Don't know if I'll make it to seventy. I got cancer.
Did you?
Yep. We just found it the day before Thanksgiving. What makes me mad is I went to my P C P. I went to the bathroom, blood come out of me in a clot. And about a month later, I went to the bathroom and some blood come out of me. But later I went to the bathroom and it was like dark purple and I called my doctor. Well, I went up, he checked this, checked that. Uh, I had to give urine samples. They they didn't, they didn't do what they were supposed to do with the urine sample. They had to go back and give him another sample. He says, oh, you just probably got kidney stones. So my wife called the urologist up in the Heights on Tuesday. And she's, and I had been there before for other problems. She said, oh, we had a cancellation tomorrow. I'd be here at one thirty. So we went up there and she ran a, a camera up inside me. And it's in my bladder. It's about about that big round section. It's cancer. Don't know how bad it is. Uh, she talked to me like we were gonna attack it. Well, she went on vacation for a couple of weeks. So I won't know, uh, January seventh, they're gonna operate on me. Hopefully, cause I've already had three tests done yesterday. I got no test. I get the the one where they put the, uh, the fluid in your system and you can fill it, the whatever. I can't remember what it's called. And then, uh, then my P C P has to give the final say and I, my wife wants to tear him to ass. She, you know? He just, uh, it's just, eh, it's just, I never had kidney stones, you know? But, uh, yeah. But, yeah, that's what we have to do. That's all.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. But, I mean, people survive cancer all the time.
I know. I, I.
Cut you early.
Well, I'm hoping it's early. I'm hoping it's early. Yeah, I wanted to talk to Bill Kellmar. I wanted to ask him what type of cancer his dad had. He seems healthy. And I think, I think he had either bladder, what else is the other thing?
Prostate?
Prostate. One of them. You know, talked to very certain people and one old guy, he said, you gotta go to their appointment. They say, don't skip any. He has, he's in his later part of his seventies.
Let's see, southwest Pennsylvania is actually one of the top cancer places in the country.
Well, probably forgetting it for as much shit's in the air. I hate to sound like that. You know, first thing the doctor asked me, do you smoke? I've never smoked in my life. She goes, uh-uh. And then I thought, well, in nineteen eighty-two, I was in a coal mine fire where I was in that chemicals that they and it was up past my waist and it burned a lot of guy's skin. It didn't do that to me though. And then I've been in some pretty bad areas that have been burnt, you know? So I don't know.
Hopefully, everything works out for you.
No, me both. Just being serious, you know?
Sounds like they caught it early.
Well, I, I hope so. Because she said, she told my wife, she said something. And I thought she was just gonna go take a sniff of it so they'd have a sample to see if it's aggressive or if it's this, you know? What do I know? My wife said, no, she's taking the whole thing out. There it is again, huh?
Yeah. That was like a little murder cycle, but that has to be like the fourth time.
Yeah, that's what I said.
You write something like that in this one?
Somebody that has a death wish.
I wouldn't even wanna die in the dark. That's not safe at all.
I can be cold as it is. I'm just freezing.
I'm cold sitting here.
You're right by the window.
I mean, I got my coat up on myself like a blanket.
You'd think if Ted was any kind of hubby, he'd take his sweatshirt off. I don't wear a jacket unless I have to. It's gonna, it's cold out if I'm wearing a jacket.
Well, I turned Timmer sat down on purpose because last month, there was a lot of people in here. It got hot. And like Charlie was saying, boy, it's hot in here. Tim was saying it was hot in here. So I'm like, okay, I turned it down. I'm like, we don't have the bodies and now it's not hot in here. I can't win.
Gary, what's your thoughts about that new buyer broker stuff that came out?
I mean, they're still paying everything they were paying before. And that just was a burden back when the buyer's agent. Because now a buyer's agent asks, they're not paying a commission. So I have to charge it. So it's just, three cents for a boss.
Yeah, I agree. Because I recently sold a house in Old Earl and Janet was there and she said, somebody's gotta pay. And she said, it's an incentive, because you're not supposed to tell the agents what the commission is on the buyer's side. But she says, if you, if the buyer's agent doesn't know that you're paying a commission, you're gonna get bumped down on the list of houses to show.
Absolutely.
Because they're only gonna show the houses that are paying a commission. Yeah, and if there's three or four houses and they're all similar, guess which one's gonna be shown first? And she said, if you wanna make it attractive to show the potential buyers, and she said, you offer, you can offer if there's a standard three percent or two and a half.
And it just doesn't change it. And we, we sell it, just not paying it. The buyer's gonna get something from it. I thought Janet was prepared out of the shirt. Everybody did.
I did too. And I've dealt with her for years. Even when I had my license and, you know, it, that was when she still had the old Vannegut office across the bridge. And, you know, she, she was real good to work for and knowledgeable. She could get deals done. But then this thing came out. Especially if you're working with first time loan buyers, they don't, they're lucky they can scrape off the dump paper. And then you're gonna smack them with another two and a half percent for to pay their agent.
I'm not sure how that works for those, the mortgage. If it's on, if it's on the seller's side, you're paying it. That's just part of the risk. So that can be included in the mortgage files. But if the buyer's has to get it from the buyer's agent, the buyer's agent, I said, if the buyer cannot be included as part of it.
Good question, I don't know. Yeah, it just complicates.
Yeah, because my license is out. I've been in jail since two thousand. I'll be here in twenty twenty. Never was as obsolete. Never did. I was so nice. She kept spotting baseball team for it. I kept, I just didn't understand what it was.
Yeah. You just janed some property on here, didn't you?
Janed it's property down if I forgot.
Yeah. Is it near, were you built there on the corner? Is it near there?
No, it's on down the floor.
Oh, brother.
Yeah, she's talking, she called me like that.
She wanna build on it or what she wants to do with it?
I heard she was pretty nice.
Is there water sewage on that one?
There's sewage, water's there.
Now how about where you just built on the corner? Is there sewage on that side? And how far back Godfrey doesn't go?
It's just a few houses past Stovil.
Some had y'all has sewage over there.
Two houses past Stovil where Bill Torren used to live.
Yeah, it's like right when you hit the crest and then there's a road to the left that coming out with that sewage. At the road to the left, they have sewage. I think that's where Williams' mom lived, Ed Williams' mom lived.
Stovil, yes. That's sewage on that whole road. Yeah. And then like on Chinley, it stops at Carrot Hook.
That ain't selling too quick, is it?
I don't know. I mean, I have heard that it did sell, but like I don't see any activity.
It's under contract now.
Oh, it is?
There at all.
Booth? Not that you can't, are you a booth? It's good.
Did he buy it or?
Yeah, he should buy it. Supposedly. It's in the process. It's bar.
It's the bar.
Oh, the bar. That's one another crest for the hill.
Yeah.
You guys are moving to three quarters?
Yeah, that's where the main station's gonna be.
What's that?
Beginning of the year.
You like the water out here, sure?
I guess. I have to bring in another dog. It's okay. I'm good.
Yes, you said that's got somebody else in trouble.
Okay, we will come out of executive session at eight o'clock on the dock. So we will next move on to the solicitor's report whenever you're ready, Tim.
Um, just two quick things. I got the Ron Grant deed drafted so we can get that property officially transferred to him. Has he paid for it?
No.
Okay, then we'll wait for that. But the deed is ready to go. And then the park authority, I started drafting and researching, um, new articles in the corporation. Everything else will be discussed in executive session. That covers my report for now.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the solicitor's report.
I want a motion to accept the solicitor's report.
Second motion by Tina, second by Jeremy. Any questions or comments on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, also I'd welcome being reappointed in twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Did you send, did you use letters? Have you ever?
I used, I'll just send the emails.
Throw it, throw it on the off to the year end meeting so we have something.
I'm out of pens completely. You want Jim, Jim order ten thousand pens. If you want pens with his name on them, file me. A stack of boxes as tall as me came to the office a few months ago. I'm like, what is all this? He opened them up, it's pens. Like, we've got more pens than we know what to do with, but they don't have my name on them.
I don't wanna pen.
Oh, those pens are really nice.
I like markers.
I think you brought that up last year as a matter of fact. Oh, was that you?
Can you please make sure the minutes reflect that Chris Coolik has requested a pen? I think he needs a brush.
I think that's been in our minutes before.
Yeah, I see it.
I think this is the second time that's been in here.
I want it in the minutes so that Tim has to look at that and realize that a formal request has been made.
Okay, so next we have old business discussion on codifications. I don't know if everyone saw the emails. I got Karen printed all out too. I did reach back out to General Codes about the ongoing costs that would be associated with codification. Um, the only ongoing cost is when we pass new ordinances, to implement those ordinances, it costs twenty-three dollars per page. And an additional ten dollars if that page has tables or photographs on it. That is their ongoing costs. They did also then clarify the online platform that we talked a little bit about. The price they gave us was of course the most expensive version of that online platform. The cheapest version of that online platform, I believe is printed at the very back of their packet, is only six hundred ninety-five dollars a year to do the cheapest version. And they kinda broke down what the light, standard and premium versions of General Code Online give you.
What did you quote at the time?
They quoted us the eleven ninety-five a year. That was their premium package. Go figure, that's what they include in the proposal. But once I questioned him on it, he broke down the three different packages. I would say we would only need, if, if we chose to do the, the online package, which doesn't take effect until the year following the completion of codification. So we're right now preliminary gonna have it completed in twenty-six. So twenty twenty-seven would be the first time we'd have to pay for it. It would be six ninety-five a year if we went with that light package at their current rates. Um, I would say we wouldn't need any more than light, because when you're looking at what the standard and premium offer, it's more stuff for attorneys, downloading the Word. I mean, maybe Tim would really like it, but, um, I would say it's just the light you need. Other than that, the only ongoing cost that is not an optional, well, could be an optional cost, but I would recommend we do it, is sending in the actual ordinances as we pass them. And he said that yearly cost is fully determined on how many ordinances the township passes in here. If we pass none, we don't pay any costs towards that. If we pass ten, well, you're probably paying pretty decent costs to actually codify those ordinances into our code.
Who wasn't, said they've dealt with this before? You?
Tim, I believe, talked about it.
Very minimally, yeah.
I think you had said Oklahoma's partly doing it.
Well, ours in the process is doing it right now.
Ted saved Jerry's life.
They're, uh.
He almost died and Ted just saved him. Gold star.
So what's the cost, bro?
Going back to the cost.
The problem that I've given you one and two last week.
So.
The only thing on here I see is thirteen nine.
That's the initial cost to do it, to codify all of our ordinances that have never been codified. So that is taking all of our ordinances, putting them all together, combining them into one standard code book for the codes of Gilfan Township. And that is the eleven nine, or not eleven ninety-five, thirteen nine ninety-five that you're seeing. There are other optional components there and different ways to go about it. But that is the one-time cost that is split over two years is the thirteen nine ninety-five.
And then these are the monthly. After that's done.
That would be yearly.
Oh, year, I mean, sorry, yearly.
Yeah, that would be, if we want to do the online codes, that's the annual fee. Then there's also annual maintenance you can do. You'll, all the options are there, then also listed below the thirteen nine ninety-five of other optional components that you can do. Including adding gender, well, and then there's also additional things you can do like adding gender neutral language, et cetera, to the thirteen nine ninety-five, which I would assume we're not gonna incur those additional costs. I don't see a reason to. So the cost is the thirteen nine ninety-five. At the last meeting, we voted to include sixty percent, can you look back in your minutes? I think it was sixty percent in next year's budget and then forty percent in the following year's budget. Oh, that should say sixty. I just noticed that. It says six percent in our minutes. So we're gonna need a motion to amend those minutes. I don't think any of us caught that.
I will make a motion to amend the minutes to say sixty. Thank you, Kevin.
May I second it. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Tina. Um, but it was eight thousand three hundred ninety-seven is the next year's cost and then the remainder would be paid in twenty twenty-six. So everyone asked me to get the yearly numbers. There's our yearly numbers, just so everyone can have some background into it.
We can do the thirteen nine ninety-five and decide on.
Online at the end. We don't even have to.
But we're done if we wanna do anything further.
Yep. That's exactly right. And that's what he said. He said it's something you can add or take away at any time, the online component. So we could in five years say, actually, maybe we wanna do online and we can just add it and they'll put it all online. So. I don't think there's any actual vote. We already made the vote to do it and include it in the budget. But everyone has asked me to bring back the, some more detailed numbers. So that proposal has a more detailed number broken down a little bit from before us.
Thank you.
Yep. So we'll move on to the municipal authority, which we tabled. Thoughts discussions on this? Obviously, we heard some further information earlier in this meeting that might be helpful to us and might change some outlooks on things. So thoughts?
We're still in a bad position. Still in a bad position. We think we have not been given a firm, one hundred percent, this is what we're doing answer from the municipal authority yet. It's, oh, we're gonna dissolve, but we just don't have like, hey, it's yours. So like at this point, we, we reached out to MAWC, you know? Communication from them, waiting to see what they're gonna say. And then we have this group come in tonight that sounds pretty, you know, pretty attractive given our circumstances. Gosh, I just, we're in a bad spot and we need a solution. And that's, the bottom line is we are fourteen days away from potentially having no employees, uh, you know, if Phil and Ken decide to walk and they have that right. They, they've made their intentions clear, you know? I don't think they'll do that. That's just my personal opinion. But, uh, you know, we could be without employees and without, you know, a way to solve a water main break or a sewage problem as we look for a new system or new operating system or new management system or if we sell or if we keep. You know, can you, are we allowed, can you fill us in on the, the communications today or is that?
I was about to ask the same question.
I don't know if that's something that we can, can we talk about that?
I, I feel like it would be important to mention what we now know of what MOC by off of us.
So this isn't formal yet.
Yeah, this is.
Quite honest, because MOC meets tomorrow and about. True. So this isn't formal yet, quite honest, because MACH meets tomorrow in about sixteen hours. But um, according to their solicitor, they would wanna assume operational control of the system, strictly the water. They don't have much issue at all or much interest, I should say, at all in the sewage. Assume operation of the water system with eventual acquisition of the system itself. And they don't wanna pay, they don't wanna buy it, so they wanna just assume it and um, take it over and go from there.
So to publicly give some background of that too, the water portion of our system is as of next year, only seventy five thousand dollars in debt. That is what they have left on previous loans that they used to build out the system. The sewer portion that MACH is not interested in has one point four million in debt from previous sewer extensions. Um, now, we are all aware that there's upcoming debt that will need to be taken on for the two tanks in the water system that both need extensive repairs, one of which really should be fully replaced. Um, that would equate to about two point five million in debt, I would estimate by the time it happens. So we're still in a sticky situation here. Um, either way, the township doesn't necessarily want to take, I'm speaking personally, I don't think the township should take on assumed, let's say, three, almost four million dollars in debt, knowing that the water system needs the work that it does.
Three million dollars.
I also don't know that it's the best option to just give away our asset. I mean, we're sitting on a water system that still is worth, I I can't, I can't throw evaluation out there, but worth a good amount of, it's a big asset.
It it they put, it generates revenue.
It's, but you have a bunch of customers that have a product that you need every day.
Yeah.
And you need it to come into your house and you need it to leave your house and you gotta pay for it. So there is there is money to be made. I mean, there's there's not, they're they're not, they don't want it because it's gonna cost them money.
I mean, look, nothing's set in stone. So we can certainly negotiate and say, look, we're not giving, or the township's not giving us what it.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. My my big concern is, should we enter into a, what we'll call a maintenance agreement with them or whatever, where they do the operations until they can acquire while we negotiate the acquisition? I wonder if it never comes out in our favor. Now they've done this maintenance and they'll probably won't pay for that maintenance if they've done everything.
Um.
Yeah.
We're in a sticky situation all around.
I agree.
I I have questions on this, what, something that the other gentleman said. He said that the concern from the water authority when they met about managing it for them before was that as they start finding leaks, they won't be able to afford to fix them.
That wasn't our authority. That was another authority we met at.
He was not talking about our authority.
No, he was talking about that Black Black Creek or whatever. No, he was saying about.
Okay.
No, I.
I was talking about.
I thought he was too.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, he was saying the Black Creek. Our authority, I was actually there for one of the meetings where he presented. They didn't ask him any questions.
Okay.
And as soon as he walked out, they said, we feel like he's too far away. It'll never work if there's a leak. And that was in my visual of what I saw, and that was the extent of the discussion.
I I was just making sure.
Yeah, yeah.
If that was a, not that we've agreed to anything, but if that became a viable option and can we afford to fix the leaks if they're finding them, but at the end of the day, we're paying for, we're using twenty two percent of the water that we're paying for.
Yeah.
If we could get someone in here that's fixing the leaks, this becomes a whole lot more profitable because we're buying water that's being wasted every single day.
Yes. And a lot of ways to look at this too. So are right now, we have a municipal authority that is water and sewer. There's nothing saying we can't split out that water and sewer. Obviously, the sewer system, the sewer authority is great. Township does not wanna take on the sewer debt, in my opinion. That's a lot of debt for us to take on initially. I I mean, there's no reason we can't leave the sewer authority in operation and explore just water options. And I think that's kind of more what we're looking at right now, I would say.
If we leave the sewer, who's the sewer authority?
I could be saying that like basically we can figure, we can figure the existing there, take the water away from it, hope that we can appoint some new members and continue to maintain and run those sewer lines, which
Well. We can figure through.
theoretically, I would think wouldn't take a lot of employees or time. Um.
I would say contractors.
And I don't know if it did something that, you know, we want, we we explored the hybrid option with our own employees and a system. I don't know if that's something that we could maybe strike in like in a maintenance agreement that that, so I don't think it would be that much time. I don't think sewer lines are great. I think it's probably cleaning and maintaining the pump stations is probably the most.
Work sewer. I think I asked a question about their sewer maintenance a couple months ago. The entire year last year, they had one actual digable maintenance issue with the sewer that they had to dig up and raise a line because it was sinking.
I mean, all.
You have, you have tap-ins.
And you have tap-ins to deal with.
Cause I know when um um.
Yeah, new construction tap-ins.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For your for your sanctuary, I think what, yeah.
Two homes, two homes and that one um, the beer did, but I mean, I I think I also think the beer would probably still be available.
And even if not given.
To do that, if you wanted to, just whenever I was with them on that one, like I did ask him. He doesn't have an employee, but he said I'm still being, he would still come out and help make things, but but that one on on Baghdad when they put that in, I mean, he was about fourteen feet deep.
Yeah.
He he had, he had a pretty large hole. They were there all all day, all day. So just.
Yeah, I mean, and compared to the water portion that sewer is.
In what I.
So another question, let's say like year end, we don't have anybody, we don't have any employees, like, or that the water authority has no employees. We need a plan, like a contingency plan to cover that interim period, whether it's, you know, ex, negotiating with the M A W C, whether it's hearing proposals from K M M. Um, I feel like if we ha, I I personally would feel a lot better if we had that contingency plan in place just to make sure that our system were up and running. Like on January second, you know, the water line breaks and half our township about water and the tank is drained.
Yeah.
And we're all like looking at each other like, why didn't we have a plan? So.
And I I feel like, I'm sorry, yeah.
We have, we we talked to a couple like private, you know, contractors. We had two people who looked like Chris Frank is the name that keeps coming around. Kevin presented us with that, which was great. And then I can't recall the name of the other company that was a little further away and.
I think that was the K M M. I love that K M M. That was them that I talked about.
Oh, that was them, that was them. Okay, I did, alright.
Yeah, they were the ones I brought their contract that they sent.
But if, but when I asked Tim about a short term option, he didn't seem to have an answer because it was like, I don't really wanna do that. I'm thinking, we need a Band-Aid until we can, you know, stitch up the wound. So.
Well. Well, then maybe it would be worth worth a discussion or looking deeper into a one year contract with him effective for next year, and that gives us time to figure it out, cause.
Oh, okay, you just. Just digest it fast and make a decision fast, that's all.
Based based on the water debt, the water system's debt, the township could tomorrow, without him, I don't literally mean tomorrow, but pretty quickly, without even having to go through Laguda, take on seventy five thousand dollars in debt and take over the water system, plain and simple. Laguda is required for over a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So anything under that purchase amount, assuming that their debt schedule was correct that I read, township could theoretically pull the water portion, hire a contractor as the township, because I don't think we're gonna convince our existing authority to hire that contractor. They have no interest in him. Have never shown any interest in him. He's met with them twice and both times they've shot him down. So just laying options out on the table here, there's.
Okay, options aside, you say they're meeting tomorrow.
Yep, and all they're doing is authorizing.
Who's gonna negotiate our ideas? Who's doing it with them?
That would be me. This board would like to do, I'm happy to do it.
Why is it saying, I don't want somebody putting something together and then saying, oh, okay, this is what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And will they give us an answer tomorrow if they want us?
Uh, no, they're authorizing their solicitor to have these discussions with me.
So what they're authorizing tomorrow is, yes, we're interested, no, we're not interested, and the discussions that's.
Right, okay.
And I resonate that bad for you. I just wanted, are we just throwing it out there that, hey, this is what they're gonna do to us and we gotta do.
I I I think you should honestly make a motion to authorize me to have those negot, potential negotiations with MACH, quite honestly.
Cause ultimately, even if Tim is the one to negotiate it, or at least talk about it, nothing happens until this point takes actions around saying.
Yeah. I can't, I cannot say yes, they agree to that without you all saying, yes, we agree to that. So.
Right. Well, that was my thing, but.
I would never do that.
We're down to seventeen days or whatever. We're down to a potential that might go anywhere.
But but we got paying them in our back pocket if we wanna go a year, and he'll do it tomorrow.
Yeah, he said we're ready to go tomorrow.
And that's what I'm, I I.
So, but my question is.
So maybe there's our kind of Band-Aid.
Okay. And that, in my mind, I mean, we would still have to negotiate with him a cost.
Maybe either, he could, he could get us down to, you know.
Twenty percent water. Oh my gosh, forty percent.
Forty percent, if we use forty percent of the water we pay for, we would double our profits. Like, that's bananas.
Forty.
You know, that would be fantastic.
And as I said, I mean.
I think it's gonna take a year to figure it out.
And I I don't believe I missed speaking in it, but the township could theoretically tomorrow vote to take out a seventy five thousand dollar loan to pay off their debt and acquire the system. We they're in our mercy anyway. We can dissolve the water portion tomorrow and, well, there's still a process to dissolving that, but the township could, without having to go through the crazy steps of Laguda, absorb seventy five thousand dollars in debt if that, if their debt schedule is correct and that's what their water net is.
Just so you are all clear, it's not ultimately up to the municipal authority, their fate. It's this group here.
But again, we still have. Yeah.
Yeah.
That decides their fate. So I just, I mean, I'm just.
We just have to figure out what is the most cost effective decision for that fate.
True.
So.
Yes.
That's my next thing. Do we have any idea what the, what came and what cost?
His contract was just sitting over here, his one water contract.
I was saying that was.
There was.
One hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
I was.
Sixteen a month.
It's sixteen thousand.
Two thousand a month.
Sixteen thousand dollars a month.
And that was with a water syst, a water only system. I mean, if if we're taking water only, that would probably.
A Bear or a Bear Creek or whatever it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is on page two.
So sixteen thousand a month, and I think he said that was full O and N, that was billing it all.
That was their minutes.
That's a fair for.
No, 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 it, there's an actual, like, payment and title agreement. Yeah, that's, let me see that.
But that money is coming out of.
That one looks it.
That was my next question.
No, like, our budget or is that the money that's coming out of like water money?
Well, that's to be determined. I mean, we can, it would come out of water money. It would come out, if we take over the water portion, we're now mailing the water
That's what I think.
From water, make that much money.
And that water money is then paying that contract.
One hundred and ninety two thousand dollars a year.
So for this particular contract, they're charging twenty four thousand a month.
Look, I'll see if I can pull that. I know it's in some part emails.
I'm sorry, what?
It's not for that bigger municipality though that he was talking about.
I think this is Bear Bear Creek Water.
It was small and he said they had four or five.
The other one, let's see, there's the. The other one was Franklin Township Municipal Sanitary. That's sanitary, I don't know.
I was looking at my paycheck now. Operating operating concept.
That's what I'm looking at.
It's in, you know, called, I think, discussion or.
Amount of sixteen thousand a month.
Additional points, GTMA discussion backup materials.
Up to seventeen and twenty five.
Is that what it's called or what?
I that's, I found an email, GTMA discussion backup materials that has their Bob's proposed work sheet that says that it would work, but I think that includes their current operating budget, but I think they also sent us their budget.
Mine's always water too, so I don't know.
Right.
Okay, so their current water budget, total actual budget, budgeted receipts is four hundred fifty three thousand six hundred eighty five. Total expenditures of four hundred twenty six thousand four hundred sixty five for fiscal year twenty four twenty five.
So they have. So they're they're or or they're up, they're not zero.
So.
Like four fifty in, four twenty five off, roughly.
Just get it quick.
There were twenty five in, twenty five in the good, but remember, we're losing employees, insurance, we're losing trucks, maintenance.
For the year.
So that number, that gap, that gap goes in our favor.
So you're saying. Cause it's two hundred thousand roughly to pay these people to take it over, manage it for us. So we're still two hundred.
Yes.
I'm getting vague-ish.
Yeah. So essentially, they're saying they bring in four hundred and and they spend four hundred. We're saying, they're not gonna bring in less than four hundred, cause that's that
That's the set rate, yeah.
The set rate of what our water cost, and if we're gonna pay these people two hundred flat to do it, we're, we have two hundred to the goods.
Right.
But that's not accounting for repairs, right? Because that's the, the E.
But that then goes to the repairs.
Yeah, and if, you know, we may eat up, the first couple of years, we may eat up two hundred thousand dollars in just line repairs, pump repairs, valve repairs, et cetera, which is, which is okay, because
Which is gonna turn a profit.
Ultimately, we're gonna get better over here.
That'll turn the profits.
Will come back around paper, so.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
So we can afford, based on their budget, we can afford to take it at two hundred because we're bringing in four hundred.
Rather than negotiating with the M A W C, I'm just gonna throw this idea, rather than spending money to negotiate with the M A W C, why don't we ask these people for like a a real proposal.
Or a real contract proposal.
A real proposal, analyze our stuff, what would it look like? What would our cost be? And if they can start in a day's notice and we have to take action quickly, at least we have it, we can be quick.
You're, what is the issue?
Go ahead.
You're not, these contracts aren't between the townships and K M M. They're making these agreements directly with the authorities.
Yes.
So we have to take it on our own.
But we would have to take the, take the water portion of the authority first to hear.
We do have to. Yeah. So that's what I'm saying, this is.
Would be our, if we're gonna make the contract, that would be our first step forward.
Can we still at least see a proposal?
Sure.
And you know, and then change, and then if we like it, we can take that next up. I think we just need to have that plan in place, like you said, and have them available.
Well, and I.
He talks like we could have that in deck.
Yeah.
The proposal.
It's, that's the way he talked, yeah, we can have a proposal turned around pretty quickly.
And he did say he could start tomorrow.
Yeah.
Which is amazing to me.
Yeah.
Which we can call him tomorrow.
That's a system you do nothing about.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's, I I don't fully agree with, I can start tomorrow.
Uh.
I could, I could call Bob when we get out of here and tell him to tell that guy that we want a real proposal tomorrow.
We need, we need something. I mean, we we've been kicking this can down the road for a long time and.
I would like to make, I would like to make a motion that Chris Colick call and get a proposal from the K M M.
Five months in at least.
I would second that.
But more are.
Tomorrow.
Questions or comments?
I don't have.
Well, well, yeah, but we'll, we meet again once the twenty sixth.
Yeah.
Yes.
We have a budget meeting on the twenty sixth.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice to have it and be able to put something in.
Saying for the twenty sixth of December.
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, okay. So I have a motion in the second to that.
I second.
Jeremy.
Jeremy seconded. Is there any other questions or comments on this? I mean, my comment is, I think it's well worth us seeing this option in paper
Well, we.
and explore. I think it's doing our due diligence, it's doing, doing this right, make sure we're doing it.
We can't talk to them for two.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we can say.
But we still have to give Tim the um, authority for us.
I wouldn't even say at this point, let's just hear their offer. Let's not negotiate anything. Let's just hear M A W C's offer.
No negotiation, it'll be.
That rather than spending a bunch of time, just let's see what they have to say. I mean, that's what we're asking K M M to do. We're not negotiating with them. We're just asking them for proposals as well, so
Okay.
Essentially, we're comparing two competitors' proposals.
I I'm gonna express a concern I have here.
Please do.
I thought that personal services exception, to me, seems like a bit of a stretch here. You're talking about huge amounts of money being spent out of by the township or the authority. What I'm saying here is, I'd like to clarify that legally for this this uh board, because you have certain requirements for public contracts that you have bidding and all these other things here, which I I it just seems.
I get what you're saying. I understand. My, I I flipping the coin, I mean, just in my experience, being borough manager in Fort City as well, we spend more than that every year.
That's what I'm saying, but it also.
We spend more than that every year on engineering services.
I thought you were bluffing.
I'm not saying he's bluffing. I just wanna make sure that's correct for your.
I I think it would be worth you, at least if they get to.
I'm gonna spend an hour looking into it, is all I'm saying.
We make it a half.
I would like to honorize him to spend fifty three and a half minutes.
I don't have time, but.
Well, I I don't think we need to.
I'm tired of the legality. I'm just saying.
That's worth checking.
Yes.
That's a huge amount of money and that personal like services is, it just seems like a very
That's worth checking.
I have a question too.
liberal interpretation of that. So maybe that's my concern. That's why I asked that, have you bid before? No, 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 we haven't. I'm not saying they're wrong. I'm just saying
Yeah, that's understandable.
I wanna make sure we're right before you all enter into an agreement with that.
Double check and make sure. Absolutely.
Cause I don't want you all sued or anything, but if there's some other company out here that offered the services and they would never afforded that opportunity to even bid for it. So that's all. I just wanna look into that.
So all we need.
I think I have a motion in the second.
What, you have a motion and second to ask them for a a proposal?
What a proposal would look like.
For Chris to call and get a proposal. Correct. My second basis. Mm-hmm. And then Jeremy seconded it. Yes.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on that motion?
And then Tim's gonna look in to see if we have to have a bid process.
Double check the, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I don't think so. I think that's just.
Do you want him to send that to me? Do you want him, him to send that to, then offword it or what do you want?
By another way, as long as it gets to the board.
Not that I have an email.
No, he got in.
Did you get in?
He got in.
He was already, I think six years with the email.
I'm glad you have it. I'm glad you're tech support.
Most of those were junk though.
That's fine, it doesn't seem.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I get it.
So we need, do we need any other votes on this or we're on to U C C?
I think we're gonna have a lot more discussion in our twenty sixth meeting once we see this contract and at least hear what, maybe what MACH is gonna offer after tomorrow. I think that'll we're really pushing this to the last minute unfortunately, but we have to explore all our offers.
We can do all of our certification.
That's how he was describing it. They have all their D E P, they they'd be considered a circuit rider, which is fully permitted under D E P. Yep, all those in favor of that motion? I opposed, motion carries.
Aye.
Okay.
He just gave you a demerit because you didn't point out that we didn't get at all in favor on that one. We already, Charlie, you asked me.
We were already talking about it and then I forgot again, cause we were talking to him. My fault. Don't don't demerit her, demerit me. I'll take the strike on that one. Um.
Moving on.
Let's see. Yep, so we have.
You can skip. No, we still have Phil's thing.
Okay, yes, that would be part of it. So we also have here a letter of interest from the chairman slash operator of the municipal authority um, willing to extend his appointment with the board until finalization of the future or dissolvedment of the authority has been determined. Your consideration, my continuation, certainly the authority is appreciated.
So we have one board member and one employee willing to stay until this water authority is written out.
Until something's figured out. I think this is him as a board member.
He's just a board member. This is just a board member.
This is him as a board member.
Oh, not a. Oh, not a board member.
No, this is him asking for reappointment to his position on the board.
Oh. So we have two board members and no board members, I don't think we need any board members, we don't need board members, so.
Yeah, well, but again, we still have the discussion on the sewer portion too, that Mike be able to stay remaining fully operational.
I think this is only, you can tell me, tell me wrong, it's only because his term was going to expire, there's still board members that don't have expired terms yet.
Yes, correct, so we have more than the two board members.
Like his term was going to expire as end of this year.
We do know, it's a seven member board, we reappointed Jack, Plom resigned.
We asked that, they. I thought we asked that, yeah, nobody else was in us.
They all kinda were, but again, we have this wishy washy with them of, well, yeah, we'll probably stick around till you figure it out.
Yeah. Let's go, 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 go. That's why I said we have two board members, we have two board members that expressed interest in staying on until this is resolved.
Two confirmed.
We need four, we need four, so this is all.
Yeah, um, mine.
So if there are board members that term that their term doesn't expire.
We can appoint up to two here.
They just stay.
Well, we already appointed one, we renewed Jack McIntyre's at the.
No, but I'm saying if we had to, we could appoint two supervisors to, yeah, but I think we determined that we could do two, and I thought that's what the.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah. I think that's. I think that was kind of.
I believe, I we can do at least one.
Well. I was saying, if in 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 the event that we would need to fill a spot to have a majority board over there, we or to have a full enough board,
You know, at least one.
Yeah.
we could potentially at least appoint one person here if needed.
Yeah.
So would we send an email to the ones whose terms aren't expiring?
Get a confirmation.
To get like a written confirmation from them that that they're saying agreed, my term has not expired and as long as this board is in existence, I'll continue my job.
You actually aren't that municipal authority that aren't even required to reappoint, but I would do it anyway.
I would, but again, it's what.
It would just continue in perpetuity until somebody actually done.
Okay, so.
Reappoint.
So we need to accept this?
We would need a motion to reappoint him, it would technically be for another five year term, but until something else is determined.
I knew, I knew we'd appoint, I didn't know if that was like a reorganization meeting thing or if that was now.
We typically appoint it before the end of the year effective January first for when their term expires, their term expires December thirty first, new appointment would be effective January first.
Do we know what their, like, we got all this from K M M, what's the authority's position on this, cause.
In their minutes, if you flip back in our meeting packet here.
They don't have one.
No, they don't have.
In in their minutes, they they gave us a very detailed, exact opinion.
They don't have a.
Our recommend, in all bold, in all caps, our recommendation is to go with M A W C. That is all bold, all caps, on page one of their November twenty minutes.
Which is why I have to tend.
Because this is a problem, your agreement is with K M M and the authority, I don't get what I'm saying.
That would be the issue starting the new year, until we could dissolve the authority and take the water system.
Yeah.
We would have to convince the authority to contract K M M for the beginning of the year.
Right.
Yeah.
If we keep, right, and if we appoint Phil back in his position and he's the chairman of that, he can just sell it to M.
Well, he can't sell any, it's, in the end, it's up to us, but he can fight us tooth and nail every step of the way.
He can, uh, yeah.
For five years, and we can continue just like this right now, okay?
Well, for.
What I'm saying is, they could, it could be a roadblock to K M M, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, that's what I said.
I mean, on who's sitting on the board.
Yeah.
I think it's under consideration to table to our December twenty sixth meeting.
Maybe, maybe let's bring address. That's what I was gonna say.
So let's table.
Let's make a motion to table the reappointment of Phil McCallum to the municipal authority to our December, what we see, twenty sixth meeting.
Understood what you're saying.
So do I have that motion, we I I think we're.
Yeah. This contract is great in theory, but it's not necessarily a board decision at the moment, that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah.
Not until we can, not until we own that water system.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, okay, so do I have that motion to table?
I would like to make the motion to table Phil's reappointment to our December twenty sixth meeting.
I second that motion.
Motion's made and seconded, any questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, so that's everything on the municipal authority, now that we want the U C C ordinance, this was properly advertised, Tim has reviewed this ordinance in the past and it is kosher, to my understanding.
I would, I would advise the board of that.
Okay, so that being said, do I have a motion to adopt the U C C ordinance to rejoin the Armstrong County U C C?
Thank God I was carrying you all night, I was second Kevin's motion.
Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Tina, any questions or comments on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, now that we have officially adopted to rejoin the U C C and sign the contracts, we do need to appoint a municipal representative for the yearly U C C meeting as well as an appeals here and rep for the U C C. Is there any volunteers, it is a, I think twice a year meeting for U C C, once in the spring, once in the fall?
Who does it belong?
I think.
We don't.
Well, we don't have, we aren't in U C C.
We just, we just join that now, so.
I used to go, it used to be four times a year, then they made it three, but.
I think it's, I won't say it's down to two now, I know the next one's in April, I know that, I don't know the one after that.
I'll volunteer for it.
You wanna be the rep on it?
I'll volunteer to do that, yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion to appoint Jeremy Smell as our rep to the U C C, Armstrong County U C C group?
I will make a motion to appoint Jeremy Smell as our rep to the U C C West Garland County group.
Armstrong County.
Armstrong, but U C, all the words that you just said.
Yes, Armstrong U C C group.
Thank you, that one.
Motion by Tina, do I have a second to appoint Jeremy?
Nancy, hold on, we're in the middle of something, Nancy.
Did the, did the township formally, I cannot recall this procedure, did you formally withdraw from the U C C?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we formally withdrawn whenever we adopted the new, new U C C enforcement group, the F D I A. They, we formally voted to leave, they reached out to us and said, we need a letter reflecting that, we sent them a letter reflecting our.
We still have the ordinance on the book that would have, the only reason I'm asking is, I'm having a really hard time with this in Oklahoma borough right now. They adopted the U C C and passed everything they needed, and we need department of state approval before they can do anything, and we're talking.
Our our U C C ordinance, adopting the U C C itself is still on the books.
Still on the book, there was nothing.
That was never changed, we still have adopted the U, the P A U C C was adopted by us and approved and we've enforced it since twenty two thousand six, maybe.
Perfect. Okay.
I was gonna say four, but.
Somewhere in there.
I just wanted to make sure, again, I'm sorry, I'm making.
Yes, that is still formally on the books, this is just simply to rejoin the Armstrong County call.
Perfect. We never, the township never officially left, okay.
We left, we left the Armstrong U C C group, but we did not void our U C C enforcement.
Just agreed, but. Perfect, thank you, I'm sorry, I'm making.
Yep. That's okay.
I just, I mean, this is, this is causing me headaches on other fronts, I wanted to make sure that there's clarity on that, on that.
Gotta ask those questions. Okay, so I have a motion by Tina to appoint Jeremy as our U C C rep, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'll abstain.
I don't know, does he have to abstain if there's no financial benefit to this?
I'm not just abstaining, just to be, just so I'm involved in making the decision.
I have, I have a lot of stuff I think that's about.
Well, I feel like anything, I anything, I feel like anything, I'm also like anything.
Okay. That's fair, that's fair.
I don't think there's a pecuniary, beneficiary benefit, but.
I would like to rather not vote for that.
Yeah, so, okay, so abstained by Jeremy. Did we make, I didn't make a call for, all those in favor?
I'll abstain.
Aye, opposed, abstained by Jeremy, motion carries.
You abstained.
I don't know when, when that comes in, I'm sorry.
Okay, now we need to appoint a appeals rep, so that what that is, is if someone appeals a U C C determination in Gilpin Township, this rep sits on the appeals board to hear that appeal, so.
It's, their level says what it does need has to have.
They cannot be an elected official or employed in any code enforcement capacity, so it has to be anyone in the township that is not one of us or their code officer, it could be Sharon Ted, it could be random, random township resident, if anyone's interested in being our appeal rep.
Yep.
Or.
Gary smiled his face.
I was looking out at the crowd, see if anybody was out there. So we can, we can forcibly appoint, so we can all in favor of.
Well, I wouldn't say we can forcibly appoint.
He doesn't have to accept.
So how about, I mean, unless someone knows anyone else that's willing to do this, we can table appointing an appeal rep until we can find someone qualified in my line.
Do we have a list of qualifications somewhere?
It just.
It's right on that letter, by the sense, pretty much they can't be an elected official, a municipal employer, anyone designated by, oh, oh, sorry, wrong one.
That's.
Yeah.
They cannot be an elected official or employed in any code enforcement capacity with municipality.
Yeah.
Can I ask, can I ask every townsman needs?
That's the. Only in, only as near to a repeal, only as near to a repeal.
Only as needs.
Oh, that's okay. I was just looking to see him was back there.
If if that's the case.
Gary, Gary's raising his hand and flipping too.
Oh, well, if that's the case, I'll I'll volunteer, no worries.
I, I don't, I don't know who you are, you're.
My name's Scott Popovich.
Scott Popovich, okay, um, and you live in the township?
Is that my suggestion? I die in a barbary in the township.
Don't know if we have residency, I think it has to be a resident.
You have to be a resident. Well, that I'm not, it's.
Okay, but Gary raised his hand, Gary.
Gary.
There you go.
And Gary also has that they should, they, is to have working knowledge of building construction, Gary, I believe you do, so you make a call for, thank you for volunteering, that's very appreciated.
Thank you.
Um, so do I have a motion to appoint?
Gary, come on, smile.
I will make a motion to appoint.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Do I have a second to that, Kevin made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
No, I think Chris got it before you, Tina.
Okay, Chris can have it.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Aye.
Woo.
Yay.
Any other old business?
Three people, three people, two volunteers, that's fantastic.
I know, right? Or you should go back.
Or you should go back.
Or three, three are here, two volunteers.
Good start, good start. Looks real broken up.
Okay, so, other new business, we have GTMA hydrant maintenance. So this was something we discussed extensively cause it's contractual, but we are bringing it to the public. Um, in October, the board voted to withhold our hydrant maintenance payment to our municipal authority, is something that we have an agreement with them to pay yearly for maintenance being done on hydrants within the township. Uh, the board last, or on October thirtieth voted to withhold that check, um, to clarify that reason, it was because so far, under the terms of that agreement, they are to be providing us with proof of this maintenance happening. That is to be done via a report included in their minutes, which they do send us monthly, however, most of the minutes over at least last year have given very little detail and the detail it gives does not really show hydrant maintenance. Um, so that being said, I believe we're looking for a motion to request proof of maintenance to remit payment. Does that mean what we're looking for here, so do I have that motion?
Yes. Yes, I would like to make a motion that we request proof of hydrant maintenance to be able to pay for them.
Perfect, second that, seconded by Jeremy, do I have any other questions or comments on that?
Um, I just have one question, who is requesting?
Yes. I would say it's probably best if we have Tim to handle that.
I would like to make the motion that Tim requests.
So we're amending the motion to include Tim, you're okay with that amendment, Jeremy?
Yes.
I'll, I'll second that amended motion.
Okay, um, the only comment I have is, I mean, we don't need to add this to the motion, but it needs to be real proof, it needs to not just be an email of, yes, they're doing it, we we need something, records, some something proving the inspection, tests.
Tests, pictures, whatever.
Something showing that these hydrants have been tested under the, uh, what was the term I used ear- earlier, the uh, accepted standard, uh.
Department.
The.
See general issues.
General industry standard, thank you, that that's the only comment I have, under general industry standard, so we don't need that in the motion, but just to clarify that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next we move on to anonymity of code violations.
Yeah, uh, I asked for this to be added after the last meeting, there was some conversation, um, because we've agreed that you need to put your name, address, contact information to our code complaints, so that not only can we follow up on them with some, with someone, but to follow back up on what was done, if there were any outcomes or results or any questions that we have to ask. Um, in that meeting, we, it was stated that it's still not public information and we would keep that just with our code enforcement officer, or if there was a need for, you know, a a an officer or someone else to know based on the complaint. Um, it was brought to my attention that there's a right to know act and if the name is on the page and someone requests the information, we have to provide it, my my question to him.
Did I bring this up?
Is you.
I think you did touch on it.
There there was something, but like for clarification, because we made a public statement saying that we will not share those names and I wanna make sure that we are
Clear.
clear that we.
So potentially there is an exception in the right to know law for ongoing investigations, criminal investigations, things like that, I mean, an ordinance violation is that, so there could be an argument made, I will say this, that the right to know law is not slanted in the township's favor whatsoever.
Yes.
So the agency itself has the burden to say, prove that your exception is applicable here.
Prove this.
I don't necessarily know if you can just say, no, we're not giving that out now, that would require the requister to go through a whole series, I don't wanna, I might need another process, but.
So just to clarify, cause I was the one that made the statement, so I will clarify, and I understand why you were making, Tina, I I did it entirely.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm trying to per.
I I did it entirely, I did it entirely, so to.
I think when that statement.
Statement that was made.
Now that I remember this, I think when that statement was raised, I wrote R T K L on a sheet of paper and showed Charlie on that, so.
And showed it around. Yeah, so for clarification, it can be removed, it can be released with a proper right to know request that does not fall under any of the exemptions.
I just, I love.
Cause I don't think that. Go ahead.
So we'll clarify that publicly, but if someone does file a complaint, it is still subject to the Pennsylvania right to know law, so I'll I'll make that clarification since I made a resolution.
Yeah. There's no getting around that, I mean, first.
Yep, no, there's no, that's that's law.
I just wanna make sure that what we're sharing with the public and what we're committing to, that we commit to by the board.
Yep, yep, I understand entirely. Anything else on that, Tina?
Just wanted the clarification, so we were all covered.
Okay, perfect, so next we have a letter from the Gilpin Leechburg Park. Good morning, with the vote coming up by supervisors on the funding for Gilpin Leechburg Park for the twenty twenty five season, the volunteers asked that the supervisors please consider giving the park an increase in funding. In years past, we received three thousand, which we appreciate, but all the expenses at the park have significantly increased each year. One example of a big increase is the mowing, in twenty twenty three, we paid four thousand four hundred and seventy, and in twenty twenty four, that increased to seven thousand three hundred and thirty. With the help of Gilpin Township, the park can meet the financial obligations of trying to maintain the park for surrounding communities to enjoy. I have enclosed our proximate income and expenses from January through October twenty twenty four of how the park has operated for the year. We know a comment was made about the possibility of doing fundraisers to help with the funding of the park. The volunteers do not feel they have the necessary experience organizing and running a fundraiser to make something like that successful. If any of the supervisors have anyone in mind who could help us do something like that, please let me know and we would be more than willing to help in any way we could. The volunteer committee has worked very hard to be financially responsible with the funds we receive to operate the park, and we hope to have the opportunity to continue continue doing that for future generations to enjoy the use of the park. We have always had a good working relationship with the Gilpin Township supervisors and we are hoping to continue that relationship into the future. Sincerely, Gilpin Leechburg Park Volunteer Committee, which is our joint recreation authority. The next page, you'll see they did submit their year to date expenses and incomes, you can see they're currently operating, it looks like at a
Are they making?
four thousand six hundred dollar deficit.
I I can't tell that from this letter, are they making the same request of Leechburg, does Leechburg give them money, are we?
I'm wondering the same thing. Leechburg gives three thousand a year as well.
So are we? So Leech.
So Leechburg gives three thousand, Gilpin gives three thousand, and the school district gives them a thousand for use of the softball fields.
Right, so are we being asked to increase ours to cover the balance, or are we being asked as well as Leechburg to each contribute to the balance?
The letter does not clarify, and I I I don't know, and I was wondering the same thing with that. I would think that might be something worth getting some clarification on for our year end meeting, for the land adoption.
Yeah, I'm asking to reach out if you would like.
And see. I would say, yeah, yeah, see if they has submitted this request to others, I think it's, I don't believe.
Well, I'm not gonna make this decision if there's a budget, you know.
That's what I'm saying, we could table it to prefer to budget it, uh, adoption, they're asking for what, an additional two thousand, but.
Right, that we. Might only be considering half this amount, right, if Gil, if Gilpin only for each, maybe splitting that, not just fully bargaining Gilpin with.
And I brought this up before and I just, I don't know if it's feasible, um, I've talked with our board about it and I've talked with them and I've talked with our employees about maybe looking into helping with the mowing, maybe not monetarily, but if we do go through the route of possibly hiring a part-time employee, like we have budgeted for, maybe offering to do the mowing for them. If we can do the mowing for them, that cuts seven thousand three hundred and thirty out of their expenses, so
So it's.
if if we, if we do that mowing, we don't have to pay, they don't have to pay that cost, just something to think about, an alternative to monetary funding. I don't know if that's something anyone would be willing to think about or consider.
Oh, I think anytime we can do that, it's a good idea.
But I mean, I I believe in Teddy, correct me if I'm wrong, we would definitely need a part-time staff staffer to help do the mowing up there, I think it would be a lot to ask of you and Maury, especially during the summer months too.
I was just saying, I first thought went to like a son, like a college kid that's home for summer, if we could get them on staff, it would probably cost us, like if they're paying seven thousand five hundred dollars approximately to have that, like, it probably wouldn't even cost us that to have a a kid for the whole summer. At that rate, you know, a couple days a week, if you wanted to find a kid that work for you this week.
Yeah, I mean, maybe work in.
We have enough, we open up from that.
I don't know what our equipment's like. But I don't know what our equipment's like.
Yeah, I was saying, we, we would.
I think, I would sit, I don't know, do they have their year?
Can't afford to go to a. I think they are far along mowing, it would take about thirty hours.
Yeah, we're.
That's why I was like, what am I?
Yeah, start, start mowing on Monday, finish on Saturday, start again on Monday, together, right?
It's just mainly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that was, you know, we've been talking about this in the past, about the school and mowing and things like that, I'm just asking. That's why it doesn't work. Anytime, I don't, I'll do whatever I can with what you decide, but like, we need a good mower for that, and that's what we decided to do. Yeah. Yeah, make big zero terms.
Big zero term would be the best.
Well, if a, if a college kid can run that, I mean, there's always that issue, you know, those can be a little bit tricky in certain areas, I know, because I have one,
Have a.
Yeah. You get on some slopes or hill sides, you know?
Yeah. Luckily, they don't have too much of that up there, it's mostly flat land, mostly.
And this is.
Well, I don't know.
This is out of our jurisdiction, right, because this is not, we don't run the park, we don't manage the park.
No.
I mean, so we could politely suggest that maybe they get some quotes, because they might find someone cheaper.
I will say, I went to one of their meetings last year, and that was their getting multiple quotes, they had like five quotes, and that was the cheapest, got seven thousand and something. I mean, it's a pretty big park, they have third, no quote, I want to say it's like close to thirty acres total, and I would say about three quarters of that is mowed or planned. The rest would be ballparks and roadway. So I mean, it, it is a pretty hefty area to be mowing and maintaining. Just, just a thought throughout there, I think it might be best if we, if this waits for further discussion at our twenty-sixth meeting, maybe we can have some conversations with them, see if this has been requested of other municipalities as well. Maybe spitball some ideas with their board, unfortunately, normally they have a board member here, surprised they didn't.
Yeah, because it's like a forty-six hundred dollar deficit, so if they're asking us to pick it up.
Well, I think what they're requesting, do they?
They haven't requested a dollar on that.
They didn't ask a dollar, okay, I thought they gave a dollar.
They're just telling us what the deficit is, they're showing the deficit and asking for a difference.
I think. I want to say in the email, they actually gave a number. I want to say they asked for an increase to five thousand, let me look for the email, it was not that long ago.
Glenda sent it?
Glenda, she sent it to all of us.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind, she didn't, I don't know why I had it in my head, but I thought she did.
I thought I saw an amount too, but I think it's that they provided the deficit as a.
That might be the dollar amount, yeah.
That perceived amount, so just, are they asking Leechburg to also join them?
Also pitch in, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll get clarification on that.
So do we want a motion to table to next month, or next meeting, for Tina to get clarification on some points? So do I have a motion to table this? Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jeremy, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So next we move on to a letter from Sonya Mazak, tax collector. Dear Board, as you know, I currently hold a position of tax collector for Gilpin Township, which is an elected position. This position only receives increase in pay when the board raises my commission for the position or when the board raises the millage for the township. An increase in pay does not take effect until the next municipal election for the next election tax collector. I am requesting an increase for this position to five percent to seven percent for taxes collected and five dollars per bill for all taxes turned over to tax claim. A position of tax collector has not received any cost of living increases for several years. There has been, there has not been any compensation for any taxes turned over to tax claim either. There's a lot of work that goes into handling any unpaid taxes. The tax collector is responsible for mailing out reminders to all parcels not paid, in addition to preparing all paperwork to turn over to tax claim. If you would consider giving me the increase, it will not take effect until the next four-year terms of office, twenty twenty six to twenty twenty nine, but must be set by law by February fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Thank you very much for your time and consideration regarding this matter, I look forward to hearing from you and answering any questions that you may have. Um, one note I have to this, I think this is something all the tax collectors are doing in the county. Um, I know Bethel Township got this same letter from their tax collector, and Leechburg Borough got this same letter from their tax collector. So I think this is something that they are all seeking across the county, um. I don't think we should make a decision tonight, personally, I feel we should probably see what surrounding municipalities also pay their tax collectors percentage-wise, and see where we fall in the grand scheme of things, I don't disagree, it is a lot of work, I mean, I, I used to work in the assessment office, so I worked pretty closely with a lot of tax collectors, it's a lot of work. Um, our delinquent collection is often pretty high, so Sonya does a pretty good job at seeking delinquent taxes and seeking, getting those funds, so I, I will give her that. We have a pretty good collection right here in the township, but I don't think it would be responsible to vote on a raise until we can see what other municipalities are doing, and we have till February to do it, so.
I agree, let's table it till we get more information, let's table it to the next meeting.
Table it. I have a motion by Jeremy to table, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Kiski Township, Kiski Township, table, table, table.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, let's.
Sorry, that's the first thing that I thought of. Um, so we'll move on to zoning report, um.
Table.
I believe most of the zoning report is now part of the code report as well, unless you have a separate report you'd like to give for zoning.
No, I kind of put them both together.
Okay, so under zoning, we do have a conditional use for smell, um, Jeremy Smale, obviously, will ask you to abstain from all of this, Jeremy, I know, you're well aware.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm really abstaining.
I know you are, um.
Believe me, I don't, I, if you need me to step outside, I can.
Hold your chair.
I don't think that's necessary, but we do have a conditional use from an application here that was recommended for approval from the planning commission.
All right.
Um, our next step is going to be scheduling a conditional use hearing, um, and Tim, if you want to go into a little detail about, so our next step. It's been a while since we've gotten a conditional use hearing, so I don't know that Tina's ever actually gotten to experience conditional use, so.
I'm really excited.
So we have a formal hearing, uh, there's a court reporter there, the applicant is required to meet a certain threshold and burden of proof in order to be granted, um, conditional use, it's going to be a little awkward, because our, our applicant is a member of the board, and he's going to abstain for obviously anything related to this, uh, but we would need at least three members of the board at the conditional use hearing there, so we have a forum. Um, you know, I, I generally run these, um, I ask questions, you know, frankly, I would turn it over to Jeremy initially, he can give his, his lowdown on all this, and then, you know, we'll have some supplemental questions to ask too. It's going to be a little bit different this time too, because this is the first one we've done under the new zoning, believe it or not, um.
So the process should be remain, I would think we're pretty, pretty much the same.
Yeah, the, yeah. Yeah, and I'll go through the zoning ordinances and make sure there's what a lot of the requirements are, um, and then we conclude the hearing, and you have, I think it's forty-five days to, to decide, generally, in the past, we've had the conditional use hearings immediately before the, um, the, the township meetings, so you can just kind of build to birth on the sound.
That means that our next meeting is on the twenty-sixth, is that enough advertising, I, how many, how much advertising do we need?
I'm actually not in town that day, I'm in Philadelphia, um, since.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, visiting in-laws, um, I actually really like my in-laws, but I didn't think of this when we agreed to that, um.
When do you come back?
The twenty-eighth, that's Friday.
Monday, the thirtieth?
I can't.
Does that give advertising time and ten board, at least three board members get here?
No, it doesn't.
And Jeremy, asking you as the applicant, would that date work with you?
The thirtieth is not working, I'm in Florida.
Okay, when are you in Florida from and till?
Thirtieth through the sixth.
Um, what, uh, what's our minimum advertising, is it seven days, like an ordinance? Okay.
What, uh, did, what time are you reorganizing on the sixth?
It is Sunday.
Well, that will be set at, you're in the meeting, so that is, you're, you're back by the sixth, or?
Uh, yeah, we're, um, um, yeah, I'll be back for the meeting, I made sure that.
Okay. Okay, okay. Wait, s- s- will it be seventh, isn't it the first Tuesday of the year?
Monday.
It is the first Monday, I don't know why I thought Tuesday.
I'm, 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 I'm on Monday, I'm on Sunday.
Okay, my, my, my total ballot, there's a reason I was gonna Tuesday.
I was on. It was first Monday, that's the Monday for the holiday.
That's correct, yes, you're right.
I can't, I can have one of yours, so I don't know that.
Honors, that's what I. So sixth, though.
Yeah.
Potential to do it prior to our reorganization meeting, and reorganization meeting to be set at our year-end meeting?
Don't you have a bunch of municipalities to go to reorganization meetings, so?
Hmm, I'll just, just buckle in here.
So what time?
Because borough code is even.
So we have not set our reorg meeting yet, but we could maybe set the hearing for six P M with a reorg meeting to follow? So maybe, I mean, we'll set the reorg meeting at the year-end.
I'm happy to go to the hearing, whatever meeting, I could not be here before five thirty P M. So as long as it's not before five thirty, I can be here on the sixth, or one up to three.
So how about, I mean, is six, so six work with the majority of the board, with three people at least, six works with me, six on the sixth of January works with me for a conditional use hearing, Tim, would that work with your schedule?
No, I, I, why would I do?
Okay, Chris, Kevin?
Yes, oh, yes.
Okay.
You're gonna reorganize seven, I don't know.
I would say we would then reorganize at seven, I can't foresee this being more than an hour-long hearing. So do I have a motion to set a conditional use hearing for Jeremy Smale at that time?
I will make a motion to set a conditional use hearing at six P M on the sixth for this male request.
Conditional use hearing.
A conditional use hearing request.
Motion by Tina, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris.
Does like, anyone want to play games here, come on, I'll be.
Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor, aye, opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to the road report, whenever you're ready, Ted.
It's a road report for Tuesday, December seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
We'll examine them.
We did some tree trimming, uh, we cleaned the trough on the Lehigh Highland intersection, uh, we set up the two smaller dump trucks for snow removal, uh, we did have the tree roads for snow and ice for a couple days there, uh, we cleared debris from the heavy winds, uh, we also had to clear a tree, uh, we opened multiple inlets, cleaned grates, uh, the guide rails were repaired on Evergreen Road, uh, did have a long meeting with Pendot to kickstart moving forward with that grant for up there. Um, we'd set up the pickup truck for the Santa ride, then we had to take it back down, uh, held two A and two B to jab road, fixed up some bad areas, and did some equipment maintenance, some building maintenance, and some moon share. Making a motion to accept the road report.
Motion by Jeremy to accept, seconded by Kevin, any comments on the road report?
I just want to tell the guys thanks for the Santa, and I'll also thank, you know, the police department when we get there, but thanks, guys, and everybody that was involved in that, you know.
I'm gonna have to make.
I know the kids, my kids loved it, and I'm sure every other kid was delighted about it, so. It's, it's nice to see you. Thanks for taking your time on a weekend and, and doing that, I know that, I appreciate it, and I think a lot of my family does as well. Well, we started down, that was just Gilpin, but now it's.
It's all.
I know, I saw y'all, we're still out at like dark, so.
It's all. Okay, having a motion and a second, all those in favor to accept the road report?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to code enforcement, and we'll call this the slash zoning report, and that's how we do the road report, if you would.
Uh, currently, I have thirteen open cases, um, ninety-nine percent of those are in a cleanup mode. People didn't comply yet, and they're making progress, obviously, with the winter months and the holidays, the cleanup, the progress slows down. So I'm still continuing to monitoring those, um, I did have to issue one citation for no action, um, the property was sent notice, it was eventually posted, no reply, no cleanup, so, um, I did issue the citation, as a sidebar, um, I did receive a state issued O R I, um, I sent Charlie an email to that effect notifying that we do now have an O R I for code enforcement in the township. Um, to activate that, I had to complete an online training, didn't take forty-five minutes, an hour, I had to do that to be able to, to solidify the O R I, so that was done as well. Um, so on the zoning side of things, uh, there was one zoning application received and issued for a pole building, um, and there was one building permit issued, which was, uh, an older permit, I think it was applied back in October, November to N B I, uh, finally got to and issued, so that's the only one that's issued as well.
If they don't pay that citation, what's the next step?
Well, there'll be a hearing, in front of the judging hearing, and then help him let the sanctions go.
Okay.
On, on another note, I did receive a call this evening prior to the meeting from a gentleman who purchased a property down at Evergreen, it was one of our neglected properties. He acquired it through a tax sale, he wanted to check in with me to see what the process was to start to clean up, and told him how about it.
Wonderful.
Yeah, he said he's actually going to take possession of the property in January, and he will be kind of keeping contact with me. He was worried that we were going to initially hammer him with a big fine or something, and I said, well, we're going to work with you to get it cleaned up, so.
That's all we want, that's all we want.
Hopefully, his communication continues, and, um, he'll turn it around.
And I will say, the one you filed the citation on has been a long time issue, this is the one that we do have a resident that attends almost every meeting to complain about that property, so good to see the citation going through, let's hope that Judge Andrew sees it the way that resident and we all see it.
And congratulations, lots of property being cleaned up and clean, cleaned up in progress, so.
Yeah, I, I took a drive-up Evergreen the other day, and I, I noticed the difference, I noticed the difference that I haven't seen in a while, so it's good to see it. Porky, do you see it too? I gotta ask, are you noticing the difference on Evergreen?
No. No. If I said, I'd have to say it in private, would I know?
Okay, okay. Well, in that case, having heard the zone and code report, if you have nothing else to add, John? Okay.
No, that's all I have.
Do I have a motion to approve the report?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, we have this R P D report, if you would.
We had two hundred fifty-one calls for service, and all three of them is found, a hundred and forty traffic stops, four vehicle accidents, five arrests, and fifteen citations issued. I have a full breakdown.
There's a full breakdown too, but that stays with the board, that can't go public, because it has some privileged information on it, so if anyone else would like to see that, girl has that down there. Do I have a motion to accept this R P D police report? Motion by Kevin, do I have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Chris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, move on to communications, we have the GTMA minutes here. Take your time and review them, um, we don't need to take any action on them, but they're there for everyone to see what's been happening at their meetings, do we have any other communications? At this time, we will take visitor comment, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Do you have any visitor comment? Okay, if not, we will move on to calendar reminders additions, I guess the only addition we have to add is the January sixth conditional use hearing. Um, and just a reminder that we do have a year-end meeting on December twenty-sixth to cover all of our year-end items, including approving the final budget. Do we have any further need for an executive session?
Okay.
Motion for adjournment?
Motion we adjourn.
And by Jeremy, do I have a second?
Sure.
Seconded by Kevin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned at nine oh seven.
So fast, my bad. I know, there's cheese, why didn't you open the cheese container?
Yeah, you're, you're complaining about it, Kevin.
There was.
I'm determined for a free sign.
No. I had some. We're all in the end. We're signing there.
Congratulations.
I went back, huh?
A road.
It's like a. Oh, the charade. Yeah, hey, Charlie, you guys still on? Eat the cake, don't put the drink. This is our Christmas party. We gotta meet this guy, man.